So is there, sorry about my lighting tonight. I'm in a weird place. Is there a motion to open the meeting?
Move to open the meeting.
At what time?
All right.
Five thirty-five.
Second.
Okay, polling the members, Dave Chanel.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Darlene.
Yes.
I guess we're gonna need Dave tonight, so Dave can be a member for voting purposes and so polling, polling Dave Funny Ole.
Yes.
Okay, I'll vote yes. Okay, so the meeting's open. First thing is the minutes, hopefully, unless anybody else has something urgent.
I took a look at the minutes and I made some suggested changes and sent them to Beth this afternoon.
Me too.
I am so glad you're doing it too, darling.
I know, yes.
But they were my comments, so I remembered.
Yeah. So Beth did, what I noticed, were they the same as Darlene, or were they two, were they different comments?
They were different.
Ooh.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
A technicality, which was very important.
Very cool. Well, motion's been made in seconds, so.
Approve them.
Yeah, I, I made a motion to approve the minutes, you know, I just didn't say it out loud.
Okay.
I seconded.
I heard it.
All right, polling the members, Dave Chanel.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Darlene.
Yes.
And Dave Funny Ole.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well, so the minutes are accepted. Now, there was, there was a bunch of correspondence and I, I'm not on my usual computer and I'm afraid if I open the the browser, I'm gonna kill the whole deal. So if somebody could go through the, we'll start with the correspondence, I guess, go through that.
Four point one was, was from the town clerk that pertaining to the special town meeting.
Okay.
As far as things that from the AG's office that they approved, Article nine, I mean, without going through them, there's, you know, it's just the typical articles that the AG looks at for, for approval. Pressed back with, not all of the things that they've, that we voted on, but at least, I think, three or four of them.
So they, they approved everything? They didn't?
Not everything, no, the, there's still, the one, and this is not on the report from the AG's hours, but the, the article that pertained to the town administrator and the revision of his job description and requirements, that was submitted, it was, there was a subcommittee that, that did that and presented it to the town, town meeting, that has been a painstaking, slow process, and it's being, it's still being tracked, it's in its third reading in the, in the Senate as of this week. I didn't even know they went through one reading, I'm like, three. Sheila, Sheila was championing that, and now that she's the, you know, I don't know if you guys know, she's now the magistrate over at Gada District Court. But John Page is the one, he was the chair of the subcommittee, so the selectman asked him to now lead the, lead the charge and, you know, carry the white flag, so to speak, and try to find it. He called me SC with the update.
Okay.
That's that, and then there is a, who's this from? Oh, Selectmen's Application of Temporary Lickal Licenses and Stuff, we don't really care about that. And if we do, I buy my own. And there's two other things that actually are our decisions that we issued last month, then there's Townsend First Paul, so what's that, Beth?
Yeah, I don't know what that is. That is just basically has to be, has to do with policy on procurement, and you can read it, it's something that the board of selectmen had put together and promoted when looking at local vendors. It doesn't really affect the zoning Board of Appeals, the only time that the ZBA will contract is for peer review engineer. And this, there really isn't any in Townsend, so to speak, this, this kind of, you know, encourages business vendors to be from Townsend.
Okay, so for the most part, we don't really care, so. And then the next, the next I was.
Peer reviews coming up.
Yeah, you know, I'm just, I'm straight up, and we have the constipation restriction that Bill mentioned already. Online permitting software from a building commissioner, that one, I didn't read that one, it's just from Eric to the selectman, Arnold Selectboy, I don't know who he's talking about there.
I think that'll be, that'll be great, actually.
Yep, yeah, I'm a big fan of that one, having just gone through the building permit process.
Well, we talked about it, yeah, it's been, it's been some long in coming, quite frankly.
It's happening this summer.
Four point six is stormwater management. I don't know what that's.
Yeah, Mike Crowley asked me to add that to the agenda, he just wanted, you know, it's, it's more applicable to planning board, but he wanted to have boards and committees provide feedback, if you had any feedback to provide on that.
Okay.
Oh, is that the existing stormwater law that he wants us to reread and, and comment on or something?
No, he put together a webpage, and it's on the, it's on the land use department webpage, it's a subpage, if you will. And it has basically resources for public education, you know, talking about what the lawn and yard care, so basically how to manage stormwater and not pollute.
Yeah, it looks like a PowerPoint presentation, or it could be screens from his website, I'm not sure, but the six, the six screenshots.
That's what I did, yeah, I just PDF'd the webpage.
So that's that one, and then the other, the last two under this section, vested rights and nonconforming use of structures, Beth, can you give us some, there's too many pages for me to read.
I attended the webinar on vested rights and nonconforming uses of structures, basically, and I shared the PowerPoint and the handbook for you to read at your, on your own time.
It's always good to, you know, revisit that pre-existing nonconforming structure.
Oh, for sure, for sure, and that's the end of it, though, that's the end of correspondence.
All right.
What time we got? Two more minutes.
Two more minutes, yeah.
Just, just so the applicants know, we can't take you hearing until 5:45 when it was posted, that's why we kind of pass around time. I noticed you took a selfie, we, we taking a picture of the screens that, I was saying, you gotta tell us to smile first.
The rogues gallery.
Yeah, I saw, I saw the camera before, I thought you were taking a picture of the screen. Two more minutes. Well, I'll tell you what, can I, can I go over, this is on three point one, Bill, this is on the, this will take a fast minute here. The, the thing that we generated from our prior hearing on the dog grooming, the board is, the, the planning board is, is posting out a notice for, for review and discussion. And we asked for the dog grooming establishment, and they entered into, well, they added, in addition to that, under one, one forty-five dash twenty-six, they added in the dog grooming, then dog training establishment, then dog daycare establishment. My thought on that is, I think the dog daycare is gonna be more of a, of a cluster than anything else, as opposed, because the other two that you were adding, dog grooming and dog training, is usually a one-on-one or maybe one-on-two at any time. Doggy daycare, you could have a boatload of dogs all barking at the same time, so I think that's gonna be a more disruptive and more controversial item to be added at that, so if we want to add in the grooming and the training, I think, I think we need to take, make our recommendation to take the dog, doggy daycare establishment out, because I think that's gonna be a cluster.
Well, okay, I hear what you're saying, but the, it's, the dog kennel, overnight kennel is already in there, right?
Yep, but you try to, I try to make that argument with the hundred and fifty people at town, town meeting, you, you and I have both done it in the past years, and it doesn't matter what's there now, changing it, you know, it's, that's, that's, that's my, that's my point, I don't, I don't know if it's, if it's gonna, if it's gonna restrict it or impede the, the acceptance of the grooming.
So that, that planning board hearing is the eleventh of April, correct?
Yeah, yes, six forty-five.
So I think we should probably tune in and make that observation, because they could.
The kennel is, I think, is a little more intrusive than what we're proposing for the, for the grooming, and I, I see the doggy daycare is kind of in line with the, with a kennel situation. So the other alternative would be is if we wanted to leave the daycare in there, but be prepared to strike it and have language without it, if town meeting doesn't like it.
You can do that, for sure, I mean, and you know, that's, I mean, that happens every, it's like changing your socks in a town meeting, every time something gets changed and withdrawn and modified, I was just, I was looking for more of a streamlined approach, but you could do it that way, because I'm, I, ever since I left the, ever since I left the board of selectmen, I don't typically go to town meeting, I got burnt out ten years ago, and I don't think I return. But that's, you know.
Well, I'll mention it next, on the eleventh, that's a Zoom hearing, right, Beth?
Yeah.
Okay.
It is, and the planning board has, we're circulating a form similar to your other referral comments, so if you wanted to comment individually, that's fine, or if you want to comment as a board, I can take care of filling out the form for you, if you want to take a vote, however you want to do it, it's fine.
They don't have any preference with anybody else.
As long as you, if you're gonna be, be attending the April eleventh meeting, that's, that's at a time where I'm commuting, six forty-five, so I won't, wouldn't be able to attend it. If you're gonna be there to make a comment about it, they just need to be, like Darlene says, need, need to be prepared to, to move quickly and strike it before the whole thing goes down in flames.
Okay.
So that's, that's my comment.
Quick question, Beth, when does the COVID emergency end as far as being able to use Zoom for meetings?
Um, well, I believe it goes through July, July fifteenth, I'm pretty sure, I'll check on the exact date, but right now it's been extended to July fifteenth, or Dave, you know?
I do not, myself, the, the courts have, I've, I've had my, I had my first in-person hearing last week at the, at the BMC, which, and I parked in that garage that collapsed this past weekend. I'm driving through this, and usually it's a double lane passage, and I'm saying, wow, this doesn't look very safe, they're like taking out chunks of this garage, and I'm, what are they doing? So I just parked there and just, and I, then this week I read the news, I'm like, the thing freaking collapsed and poor guy died from it, I'm like, oh.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, so, so it started to make it, it started to do in person, not every court, I think it's at the judge's discretion.
Yeah, if it was at our discretion, that would be great, but I don't think it will be, eventually.
The federal courts have gone, my, 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 my federal practice, that's almost exclusively Zoom now, it's, it's Zoom.gov, and they, that has, that has, they promulgated rules to account for that, so that's where it's going, certain, certain aspects of it, and then, you know, other things require in person, but most times it's gonna be, it's gonna be Zoom or some, or some kind of remote. That's, that's the way in the future.
All right, so let's see. Do we read the notice or do we open the hearing?
Make, I'll make a motion that we open the, and if you could take your, your mute off for the camera, please, the applicants. I'm gonna ask you to pronounce your names, because I don't want to butcher it.
My, my name is Ovidiu, O-V-I-D-I-U, Ovidiu.
And how do you pronounce your last name?
Ilincaro.
Okay. I will make a motion that we open the hearing of Mr. and Mrs. Illicato for a special permit under zoning bylaws one forty-five sixty-five and one forty-five thirty-six.
Okay, polling the members, David.
Yes, David Chanel, yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Darlene.
Yes.
Dave Funny Ole.
Dave Funny Ole, yes.
I'll vote yes, okay, the, the hearing is open, the clerk will read the notice, please.
In accordance with Matt General Oz, Chapter forty-eight, the Townsend zoning bylaws, the Townsend zoning Board of Appeals will hold a remote access and virtual, virtual meeting on Wednesday, March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, at five forty-five, on the application of Mr. and Mrs. Illicato for a special permit under zoning bylaws one forty-five sixty-five and one forty-five thirty-six. The applicants are proposing to repurpose existing interior structures in a single-family residence under approval of accessory apartments, use of one sixty-nine Wallace Hill Road map, thirty-five blocks, thirty lot three, located at RB two zoning district. Public remote only access to being via the following Zoom link, whatever, parties wishing to speak in support of or opposition to this application may do so in writing prior to the hearing or in virtual hearing in person or represented by an agent or attorney. Copies of this application are available for review in the town, in the offices of the town clerk and zoning board of appeals office during business hours, or by emailing a request for digital copy to thefaxing@townsmass.gov. William Cattigan, Chairman.
Thanks. So I, I wanted to bring something up, because it's a application for a special permit, but it's being handled as a pre-existing nonconforming use, which is also a special permit, but it doesn't say that in the ad, so, but I think we're, we're covered as far as notice is concerned.
Yeah, I think so.
And the building inspector's letter mentions the pre-existing nonconforming use. The basic, the basic issue here is because the bylaw was changed since that apartment was originally approved from thirty-five percent area ratio to, it's been changed to thirty percent, so this doesn't comply with the new bylaw anymore. I, you know, I basically, I talked to the building inspector and I said that I think pre-existing nonconforming uses is the way to go. So we need to make a Section Six finding at some point about the nonconforming use, and then the regular accessory apartment findings.
Yeah, the, the other thing, Bill, I was, I will admit that I just looked at it this afternoon, because this was a, a, a pre, a priorly, previously approved accessory apartment. We talked about whether or not, you know, we've always gone on the premise that a, that a variance rides with the land, it is what it is, and a special permit terminates upon transfer, which is actually not the case anymore. Special permits, you can condition them to, to expire upon transfer, you can condition for a sunset provision where it stops at a year, two years, three years, five years, whatever. So I asked Beth to pull the original decision from ninety-four, because my, my position was gonna be that, if that did not have a sunset provision or terminate, or have wording that said it terminated upon transfer, that it was still good. But it has, it has a sunset provision that expires, I think, June tenth of nineteen ninety-nine. So that, that went away, but just in the future, I think we need to look at those, and I, I don't think Eric is aware of that change in the special permit criteria. But special permits ride with the land as well as, but the difference with a variance is that we can condition it to terminate when we want it to, whereas variance, it is what it is. So we gotta go forward, we gotta.
We've, we've added to our boilerplate special permit that they expire on transfer of ownership.
There you go.
We've done that already.
Yeah.
But I hear what you're saying about the, the original, I mean, you know, the problem is, the, the bylaw actually says that it's, it's only valid, the special permit is only gonna be valid for five years in this, in this particular case of accessory apartment, so when they rewrote the bylaw, they've got that fifteen-year affordable thing going on, and we just haven't had any issues with these accessory apartments. You know, and that, in the past, that was our rationale for, for issuing special permits with shorter terms, because then, you know, if there was an issue, at least the thing would expire and, and we could do something about it.
Yeah, we always put five years in, in our, in our accessory apartment decisions, I mean, it's almost like.
Well, it's, it's in the bylaw that, that that's the way it is, so I don't, we have any choice about that, but we may want to consider changing that bylaw to like the fifteen-year.
Yeah, but as long, as long as we have it, and I, I would say, though, if the, if the bylaw says five years or whatever, and a decision does not say that, I think the decision is gonna be, gonna preempt them, so if you have the boilerplate and decision, then I think that's the appropriate way to go. Because it's gotta be, it's gotta be noticed to the public, it would be the process, which is what the, what the recording does for you.
If you're gonna go many years, talking ten or fifteen years, you might as well just do on transfer.
I like that.
What that does is, I've actually had a lender pick up on a home after an appraisal that there was an accessory apartment, and they looked to see if there was a valid permit on file. Yeah, so, I mean, it's very rare, but I'd hate to see someone penalized because, you know, their permit ran out a year or two ago, and they're just looking to sell the house, and somebody else has to just come in and get a special permit anyway, so.
I like, I like the clause where, where it would expire upon transfer, I think that's good, so then it would, so, so Darlene, as, as a real estate broker, if you were selling John Smith's house, and he had an existing accessory apartment with his mother living, and he was selling it to somebody else, who also had the intent to have their parent live in the dates, that it would still terminate, and they would still need to get, to go through the process, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely, but at least it's valid up until that point, and it doesn't give someone a hassle just for the point of financing or something like that.
Yeah, well, I've always said that, no matter what we do, as long as it's clear and consistent, you know, as long as people know where we're coming from, so that's good, so for this one, we gotta start from the scratch.
Chairman Cattigan, I did not see in the bylaw, amended bylaw, an expiration date for the special permit in the, in the actual bylaw, did I miss it?
Okay.
I just read it.
As long, as long as we have it in our boilerplate for the decisions, I think we're covered.
If it's not in, if it's not in the bylaw, then we can, we can do whatever we want.
Right. You can let it ride, terminate after five, terminate a transfer, whatever, I just think we need to be consistent.
Yeah. All right.
Yep.
So I, I guess, I'd like to hear from the applicant on, you know, what their, what their general plan is.
Our, our plan is to keep it as is, as is built, we don't want to, we don't want to modify, period, and my mother-in-law and my brother-in-law will be off buying it up on approval. Right now, when we purchased the, the place, we had to take the stove out to appraise it as a single home, but so that's why we're here, and we want to do everything right, and, you know, get all the, all the things by, by the books. But we don't want to modify the property at all, we want to keep it as it is, as it was intended and built.
Can I ask, ask a question? When, when, when you went to buy it, so, and I, I don't do real estate law, and Darlene is a, is our resident expert on transfers and stuff, so when you, when you were gonna buy it, it had, in the accessory, it had a stove that your lender required you to take out in order to qualify for the single-family loan?
Exactly.
Anything else they had to take out?
Well, we, we had to take a, a door, we, you know, you, you have to, it was, it was pretty minimal and pretty easy, because there's a couple of things to, I could have taken the bathrooms out, but that would be harder.
Yeah, right.
So we eliminated the kitchen, and we eliminated the door between the, the main, the main part of the house and the, and the auxiliary.
So to turn it back into an accessory, you need to put a door on and buy, buy a stove?
Well, the stove is still here, it's just, it's just disconnected from the electrical panel and disconnected from the outlet in the kitchen. So then, so the, the breaker is out, it's put a blank breaker on, it's disconnected completely from the panel, and it's just pushed, pushed aside somewhere.
Bill's laughing like I am, so basically, you just take the plank off, put the wire back on, and put the plug back in.
Well, no, I have to pull a permit and, you know, go schedule with, with an electrician, Eric will come and look it up and.
Yeah, I'm not talking about permitting, I'm just talking about the, the basics of it, it just, it's, it's not that much.
I have to, I have to hire an electrician to put the breaker back on and, and, and put it back in the kitchen, yes, and then put a door back.
Happy with that, though. That's amazing.
That's good, okay, I just wanted to understand what you're looking at.
We need to go through the whole analysis, or can we just incorporate the original permit by reference?
Oh, that would be good.
Do we have his original permit, though?
Yeah, Beth, Beth sent it to me today to look at.
It's in the file, I did put it in, look, you will, under the subfolder two point one, code and guidelines for public hearing. I put it under original special permit nineteen ninety-four, I just, I just uploaded it after, after a conversation with David. Find that there. It was recorded, there's a book and page.
Yeah, so Bill, Marilyn McKeckren signed as the town clerk, by the way.
Well.
Right?
Haven't heard of her in a while.
You know, it's funny, I thought I was on the ZBA at that time, but the people who signed it was you as chairman, which has been like same since, since the Pope was an altar boy. You got John, John Wilder was the clerk, Brian Berry, who I do not know, John Curran.
Yeah.
Lisa Stevenson.
Yeah.
Wendy Ash, who was an associate, she's a real estate attorney now, and George Boyer, who was an associate who, who's passed away. Those are the people that were there participating, a lot, a lot of names from the past.
Yeah, no, I didn't come along until ninety-five, something like that.
Yeah, that's when I came on, right around that same time.
Short timer.
So, I mean, it's, it's, it's a five-page decision, it's, it's very well done, you know? And it has the thirty-five percent, which is, which was then applicable at the time, so we could, we could just adopt it by reference.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate, and then we just have to go through the Section Six finding that, that it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood, I forget what it is.
But for, in order to adopt, to, to adopt by reference, has everybody at least received the copy of the old decision? In the Dropbox, you have to at least be able to read it to agree to motion to, to accept it.
I'll look it up.
Yeah, I'm looking it right now, so.
Okay.
Pull it.
Now, that's a good, that's a good idea, Bill, save, save Beth a lot of time for, sir. I wonder if, I wonder if they did a Section Six finding on there.
No, the original thing complied. The only reason we have to do it on this is because it doesn't comply anymore.
All because of the thirty-five to thirty percent.
Right.
Actually, back then, according to this special permit, it was twenty-nine point seven percent of the total floor area, less than the maximum thirty-five allowed. So even now, it would still apply with, if we adopt this by reference, they, 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 they found in the decision that it was twenty-nine point seven percent of the total floor area, so it still complies, even on today's standards.
The only difference would be is removing the language for expires after five years or whatever, changing what Darlene said.
Yep, yeah, those. So let me ask you then, Bill, I mean, you're the king of those, of those things, if we, because this, of course, if we take it, if we take it as, as fate, that it's twenty-nine point seven, and that is on page, wow. It's actually the first page, number two, it says total floor area of the apartment and the principal residence combined is thirty-five sixty square feet, and the floor area of the apartment is ten fifty-six, making the apartment twenty-nine point seven of the total floor space, less than the maximum of thirty-five percent. So this, what do you think?
I think we should check Eric's letter to see if he's got the same numbers.
Let me see. So Eric's, does he have any?
Chairman Catigan, in the bylaw, if I may, it says the floor area of the apartment shall be the lesser of eight hundred square feet or thirty-five percent of the floor area of the principal residence.
So it meets the percentage, but not the not the not the maximum foot footage. It's more than it's more than eight hundred then, so it doesn't apply. Okay. Yeah, we, yeah, that's right. We didn't like that. Anyways, all right. So special six finding.
I'm not seeing the special permit criteria being addressed here yet. Do you see this? Wait a minute.
Yeah, well, well, darling, darling looks at that bill. I mean, for the section six finding, before we can do the proposed use will not have an adverse effect, we have to go through A through G.
Yeah, I'm not seeing the A through G addressed in this decision. Do you do?
That's what I said to Bill. He said, he said it was because it was it was allowed by then. So it wasn't a special, it didn't have to go through the section six, section six finding.
No, 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 not the not the non-conforming section six, but the regular special permit criteria.
Adequate provision has been made.
All, yeah, all the A through G or whatever it is that we go through. I don't see that in this decision. The findings of fact.
It's on page three.
On page three.
I think I see adequate provision has been made for ingress and egress, but it must have been different, you know, back then.
They're not actually addressing the each letter like we do.
Yeah.
It might be throughout. I I'd rather, I'd like to go through that criteria, the A through G stuff, just, and then we can also reference this, but where it's not addressed and that's.
No, that's what Bill said, darling. Bill said to go through the, he did say go through that.
Reading, so.
It's okay.
Cool.
So I agree with you. It's not there. That's what I I said that to Bill, and that's what his comment was that it was not was not necessary back then. But for our purposes, we need to go through.
All right. So let's go through the special permit criteria then, and then we could do the section six finding, and then we can make a motion and incorporate the previous decision. Sound like a plan? Right.
Sounds good.
All right, one forty-five dash sixty-five. This is.
Page three.
One, A adequacy of the site in terms of size for the proposed uses. What do we say? It's a two-acre lot?
Yes.
Suitability of the site for the proposed use. It's a residential use and a residential neighborhood, and it's allowed by special permit. Impact on traffic flow and safety. There shouldn't, it should be negligible. There's a big driveway can actually turn around. Is there one driveway or two?
One driveway.
Yeah.
D.
D. Impact on neighborhood visual character included users and visitors. Looks just like a single family home.
It's no change, because they're not changing the the shelf.
And there's no change. Adequacy of Methodist source disposal source of water and drainage. Well, you've got to comply with border health and everybody else, so.
Clara called yesterday, and she said it's fine.
The comments from the board of health was that everything was okay.
Nice.
Adequacy of utilities and other public services. I assume you're all hooked up and ready to go, and there's no changes being made.
Except for the stove.
Except for the stove. I don't know if that's a public service, though. Are you fucking, are we invited over for dinner?
Yeah, we only have one stove now, so it's got to be a small dinner.
We shouldn't even joke like that. Impact on ground and surface water quality and other environmental and natural resource considerations. I don't think there's really anything to talk about there.
Again, there's no change on the outside, so I don't think it's, I don't think it's applicable. All right.
All right. And then there's the.
Let's do a motion first, darling. Make a motion that the.
Those are the, those are findings of fact for the special permit. We don't, do we don't need to address the the, sorry, I'm having a brain.
I think what we, no, I think what you do is you make a motion now that the proposed use will not have, you know, the standard formula. And then you go to the actual accessory, and you make and you make a motion to approve and incorporate incorporate by reference, the decision dated such and such a date with the excluding the, I'd have to look at excluding the paragraph for the termination and just say that it terminates upon transfer of the property. And that's probably, is that all we have to do, I would, I believe.
So the, we don't need to go through the actual, we normally go through all the criteria in the bylaw, but that previous decision does address it for.
It's got all, it's got all the numbers and the measurements and all that.
All right, I don't have the non-conforming. Do you have, anybody have the non-conforming phrase in front of them?
I haven't. I make a motion that the proposed use will not have an adverse effects which overbalances beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town in view of the particular characteristics of the site.
Second.
Polling the members, anything to be said? Polling the members, Dave Chanel.
Ah, yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Darlene.
Yes.
Dave Funnyoli.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well, Bill Catigan. All right, so that motion carries. Then do we need to have a motion on the findings of fact?
The findings of, well, let me ask you, Bill, the findings of fact are delineated in the in the original decision. I mean, they they the findings of fact for us are the physical size of the property, the percentage. So I don't know if we need to do anything else.
And occupied by a family member.
So this is a, this is a double special permit, right? One is for the, one is for the accessory apartment. The other one is for the pre-existing non-conforming use. So we, we don't need to make findings of fact on the accessory apartment if we incorporate the decision by reference. We do need to make findings of fact on the special permit pre, the section six finding, basically, that we used to call it. Does that, does that make sense, or am I off the rails here?
You gotta, you gotta talk some more about, because I'm, I'm, I'm not getting it.
So you, you, you just made a motion that it will not have
Adverse effects.
Adverse effects, et cetera. So does that cover us for the section six finding? That's all my question is.
Okay, what is it that you're looking for in a section six finding? That's what I'm, I guess that's what I'm asking.
Well, that's what it is. I mean, that the the use will not have adverse effects, effects which overbalances beneficial effects.
That's the motion I just made, though, right?
Yeah, so that is, that is the section six finding motion.
All right.
Not took into consideration the findings of fact for the A through G or whatever letters we just went through.
That's what I was wondering. It seems like we've done that, but I don't know what what more you would need to do.
Yeah.
Make a motion to accept those findings of fact. That's all I guess I'm.
Okay, so make a motion to to accept the findings of fact as 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 in as delineated in the decision of nineteen ninety-four?
No, the the Darlene just went through a few minutes ago.
I thought the motion he made covered that.
Okay. All right. Everybody agree with that?
He's very convincing.
Is there a, is there a motion on the special permit then?
I was looking at the date of this puppy. Let me see.
Can I just make a point of order? The typically part of the public hearing is reading the mandatory referrals.
Oh, yeah, that's right. We had to do the mandatory referrals.
Thank you, Beth.
Welcome.
She's such a stickler for for rules.
She keeps us honest. Keeps us out of trouble.
Bill, do you have those?
Hang on, I've got them here somewhere.
You're not very substantive, but there are a few.
I have a few. If you can't open, because you're not on your machine, I can read them if you want.
I got them here.
Okay.
I just, I can't read, but.
You gotta turn some lights on in that place, I'll tell you.
So the planning board. Oh, I don't understand.
The planning board is in support of an accessory apartment at one sixty-nine Wallace Hill Road. Per unanimous vote of the planning board members present at the three fourteen public meeting. Good?
Good.
Board of Health.
All set.
All set. Yeah.
I'm glad I liked that one.
Very official. Building Christiana?
Yeah, he wrote a letter.
No comment. I support this. I I looked at that. I'm like, how, it's kind of like an oxymoron. He says NC, no comment. I support this. Why did you have to say I put?
Commission just has a little squiggle.
Yeah.
They have no comment. Yeah.
There it is. Okay. Only department, no comment. And that's all I see.
That's all I see, too.
I got to.
All right. You'll get copies. The applicants will get copies of these comments.
All these no comments.
I'm sure you'll frame them and put them on the wall, but anyway. All right, is there a motion on the special permit?
David, take it away.
I was hoping for someone else to do it.
You have it in front of you.
We know that. We're not, we're not in person.
And you can say their last name better than I can.
I I think I I think I messed it up, though. I mean, I I apologize.
You're close enough.
Okay. One more time, could you say your name for me, please? I apologize again.
Elin Caru.
Edicato. God, I sound like I'm, that's official. I'll make a motion that we approve the accessory permit, special permit of Ovidio, Edicato, and Crystal Edicato for a special permit again under zoning bylaws one forty-five sixty-five and one forty-five thirty-six by incorporating by reference a previously issued decision on said property dated April fourteenth nineteen ninety-four with the proviso.
And it's on the finding of facts from tonight.
I'm not done yet.
All right.
With the proviso that the the permit shall expire upon the transfer of the property. I'm just doing it so because Beth's writing. And the findings of fact reached today, reached in the hearing. I think that's my here, that's my motion.
Second.
Okay, anything to be said?
Thank you.
All right, I'm changing my vote. I'm changing my vote to no.
Wait a minute, we have to vote on this. Polling the members, Dave Chanel.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Darlene.
Yes.
Dave Funnyoli.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, Bill Catigan. So the motion carries.
Hey, Bill, we lost Beth.
Yep.
Yeah. Well, maybe she's had enough.
She's, but she's writing the minutes.
Well, it's on, it's on tape and stuff, though. It's, it won't be a problem.
I usually get a copy of the video to her within twenty-four hours, and she uses it to refine the minutes that she writes.
Okay, good. Thanks, Dave.
Before I forget, you should authorize me to sign.
I was gonna, I was holding, yeah, I was gonna wait back for Beth to be, but I'll make a motion that we that we appoint Chairman William Catigan to sign on behalf of the, sign the decision on behalf of the zoning board of appeals.
Second.
Okay, polling the members, Dave Chanel.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Darlene. Dave Funnyoli.
Yes.
And I'll, I'll vote yes, too. So, so that motion carries as well. So for the Ellen Caru family, we have fourteen days to file this decision. And, you know, it may not take that long. It depends on what Beth's workload is and stuff like that. And you'll get a copy of the decision in the mail, and it'll have the town clerk stamp on it, and that's the date of filing. The official filing. And so there's a, there's a twenty-day appeal period for a special permit, so any of your irate neighbors that didn't show up can appeal the thing. But anyway, appeals have to be filed with the town clerk as well. They're they're in court and stuff. There, it's a court filing, but the town clerk has to be notified. So at the end of the twenty days, the town clerk will give you a letter certifying that no appeals have been filed. You you need to record this decision at the registry of deeds. Middlesex South, which is Cambridge and Lowell now, too, or or you could even mail it in, I think. So if if you take the letter from the town clerk plus evidence of recording, you'll get a recording number to the building department, and you'll get your permit, building permit. And C of O, because you you don't have to do anything but some wiring, so they'll probably just give you the C of O for the apartment. I don't know. We'll see.
So the CNO is going to be all after all this is done, right? We should leave this, we should leave the scope in the bedroom as it is.
That's Gary coming wants to do it.
I mean, since you're not making really any modifications other than an electrical thing, you know, I don't, I don't see why he wouldn't just give you a C of O right away, but we'll see. We can't control the building department. Nobody can control the building department.
Well, Janet does.
Maybe. All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman and members of the board. We appreciate all the work you guys put in. Thank you, Beth.
Yeah, checking with, checking with Beth Thursday or Friday, you know, just see, see where she stands. She'll give you, she'll give you a better understanding when she'll have the decision issue.
Yeah, she worked very hard on this. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Beth.
Okay, all right, bye-bye.
All right, do we want to do anything else?
You have the work session. Oh, power, I just, I texted, I emailed Beth, and I said, what's going on? And she said, we lost power. She's at the town hall, right?
That's what it looked like.
Yeah, she told me, I I talked to her about four thirty, and she said she was working, working from the office.
Yeah, and she, she told me earlier this afternoon, like maybe noon time-ish one, that internet and phone systems were down for about an hour, maybe a little less. So they may be doing some work down at town hall that is killing the power.
Yeah. I hope she comes back.
Just looking at the work session, we've got the two planning board referrals for the zoning thing, which we'll cover it. I'll cover that at the hearing. Then, for some reason, the age-restricted development bylaws in there. I don't know why. And then there's this webinar series zoning with overlay. I guess what I should point out is that tomorrow is the last day to comment on this. Beth sent out this MRPC recommendation. There she is.
I hope no one heard what I said when I realized my power was. I hope no one heard what I said when I realized my power was about to die, did they?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, hot, hotly, hotly muted you with a big X through the, through your picture.
I, I haven't read this MRPC thing, but I encourage everybody to read it tonight and, and um, make a comment by tomorrow if that's appropriate. Because I'm, I'm a little concerned about the, the uh, you know, this crazy uh. MBTA community development thing and.
Yeah, Bill, you wanna just give us a quick little overview on that? Just um, I don't know if everybody knows what that is. I kind of just. Came across my radar and I don't know why.
About the age restriction too? Is that what it is?
They're basically trying to blow holes in our bylaws, so, I mean, it's, it's a, I consider it a very uh, adverse process. Uh, personally, but. Um, I know we need housing.
I don't understand that.
Well, because we're adjacent to the, you know, the railroad line that goes to Pittsburgh. They consider that part of the MBTA, although it's not, it's a, it's a separate. Organization, I believe, that handles the commuter rail. But anyway, um. Uh, you know, the DHCD, they, they're very big on this top-down approach to zoning, you know. We'll tell you how to do it and you guys just, whatever. So, um, the uh, the thing is, uh, they're recommending some phenomenal amount of. As of right, um, multifamily housing. So, um. Uh, my concern is, we've, we've got the age restricted bylaw coming in, which is kind of multifamily housing as far as I can tell. And um. High density, anyway. Um, so. We'd like to foster that, but you know, that's also a carte blanche anywhere in town. And I think what's, what's most important for Townsend is to keep development out of the aquifer at this point. Because, you know, our water supplies are, are getting harmed. I mean, we still got, we had to close down uh. Which is Brook because of the PFAS, right? And they, we've got to put in a two million dollar treatment plant. To get that well back online and stuff, so. Um, uh, I know that, um, and, and we're talking about trying to enhance the uh, age restricted. In the downtown commercial district or the downtown area at least, which is in the aquifer, you know. But as far as the state coming along and say, oh, we, we should do this, we should do that. Uh, I, I kind of want to steer them into the uh, upland parcels. Rather than into the aquifer for, for high density development. And um, you know, I think that's a, an issue that we, we really have to sit down and discuss. Individual parcels, uh, as far as targeting where we want to put this kind of housing. So, um.
Is there any way that we can, we can, you know. Is there a mechanism to go and go, this isn't, this doesn't fit here, you know?
No, that's, that's, listen, uh, believe me, we denied Copper Smith Way. And uh, you know, because of the fact that it wasn't state or federal funded. And uh, you know, we basically got, got our butts handed back to us, you know, by the DHCD.
I remember that. That was the law in place. Um, can't we, you know, contact legislators and, and. Say, what do you mean, MBTA community? What? It doesn't make sense.
No, I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't. I, I shouldn't say that we can't do anything, but I, I suspect that's the case. Basically, they're using a stick kind of, uh, maybe a little bit of a carrot in that. They um, they say if we, if we build uh, nineteen um. Units of multifamily housing in a year, um, then we can wave off any forty Bs that come to town.
Only wave them off for one year, though.
Yeah, for just the one year, right? And, you know, I pointed out that the planning board is, you know, we do ten building permits a year, ten houses a year. So they want us to double our, you know, we're gonna have our ten single family houses. And they want nineteen more uh, families in town. You know, I, I just, I, I don't know how that's gonna work.
Yeah, it's unsustainable and we really don't have the area for it.
So we, so we have to roll over and take it, is what you're saying.
Well, if we, if we, we, yeah, we can tell them to pound sand, but they're gonna make, they, they won't let us apply for some grants that we need. Some grants that we need and stuff like that, so they, they've got a big stick and a, and a little carrot.
They're, they're trying to apply a one-size-fits-all.
Yeah, I, I don't have any problem with higher density on MTA lines, you know, I, I think that's what the law is. But to apply it to Townsend where all we have is like, what is it, forty, fifty percent state forest? I mean. You know, and the state won't swap out any land, you know, the state is sitting on some nice developable land that, that. I don't think is in the aquifer, but you know, and we've got plenty of wetlands, we could, we could swap them, but they won't even swap with us. You know, that's the VCR and whatever. So, um, I, I think it's a, it's a really, potentially very bad situation. And, you know, we've just gotta hope that somebody like Hicks doesn't come through and build another Timberley Park somewhere. Where we don't want it, you know? So.
I ask if everyone was able to locate that letter, because it's an excellent letter that MRPC created. Uh, we, we're able to find it because I put it in very last minute.
I could not find it, I, I.
Under preliminaries, in that preliminaries folder, and if you open that up, it says MRPC formal comments.
I was looking on the, I was looking at the correspondence.
Yeah, it's an excellent letter. I only put it up there because I didn't know if Phil would have time to add it. But it, there's a lot of really good information in there, working, or information that we can work with. Um, put it, it's, you know, basically, it takes all the communities that are members of MRPC. And talks about why, you know, the, the data of why this is not a really. A good fit, if you will, for um, these communities.
Right. Well, and that's the specialty of DHCD. They, they, they could care less who they're dealing with, you know. Um, they just want it, and they want their margarita and they want it now.
Just to add, the comment period closes tomorrow. If you're gonna individually comment, um, please do it by tomorrow.
So where would that comment go on the MRPC website?
Well, um, that's a great question. I see that this comment is addressed to Mike Keenley. The secretary of the executive office of housing and economic development. So I'm assuming that would be the recipient of your comment, individual comments. Um, but I would, I will try to find an email and get that to you. Uh, you know, so you can email that in.
That'd be great, thanks, Beth.
Has anybody commented yet? Like, hey, you wanna look at our community again? Because we're nowhere near. Um, you know, a plane. Has anybody done that yet? I know it sounds obvious, but maybe not.
I don't know. All I know is I have this, we have this letter.
Who, who runs the DHCD now? I mean, the, the only thing you could do is go do a sit-in in his office, I, I would think. That might get some attention.
I mean, if you get a chance, if you haven't read that MRPC letter, if you read it, they basically explicitly state that. Out of X number of communities under consideration as MBTA communities. It's like, eight of them have no sewer, no town water.
Right.
Four or five of them basically have nowhere to build anything. And did, so, I mean, the MRPC letter kind of states what, what the hell are you people thinking? These communities won't be able to comply.
Yeah. Okay.
You could pull out of that letter if you wanted for your individual comments, because it's all done for you, you know. The develop a land, uh, developable land definition, they were very specific in there. Um, where the inconsistencies are.
Okay. Alright, well, that's a melancholy conclusion, but.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Do we have any other work to do?
Is there anything else, Beth?
I'm sorry, I was out for a few moments, but I don't think so. Hey, the reason I put the age restricted development under work session is um, for previous discussions. I know that the board had talked about working on that and I didn't, I wanted to keep it on the agenda, but I'll take it off if, if it's not something you want on there right now.
I don't know, we, we, we would have to, you know, put, I don't know how we're gonna do that.
Well, there are no applications pending right now, so I don't know when the next meeting will be. Uh, for the ZBA, um, but. Right now I have, there are planning board applications, two forty-one Main Street has come into planning, so that's good. Yeah.
Cool.
So Beth, just to let you know, we did grant the, we did grant the accessory apartment. And uh, we voted, we voted to uh, have Bill sign on our behalf.
Oh, what, thank you. And I'll take care of the decision tomorrow.
Don't remind us, yeah.
Great.
I'll, Beth, I'll have the video ready for you, so when you come in in the morning, you should be able to uh, review it.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay, um, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Polling the members, Dave Chanel.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Darlene.
Yes.
Dave Funnyoli.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well, Bill Cattigan. Thank you.
Alright, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Stay out of the hot sun.